Just so members of the public are with us today, so everybody and board members recognize we are videotaping this session, so everybody is aware of that sitting in the room. This is a public meeting, it will be conducted as such. We're going to follow the agenda and we'll move along with that. First, we're going to start with approval of the draft minutes for November 13th, 2017. Any comments, considerations, corrections associated with that? Okay, we've had any accepted, primary second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first we're going to start with McDonald's, 3912 Anita Street. We're looking at grant final approval on this. Joe, any comments, questions, or concerns associated with further submittals or anything? Chris Lawton's here.
Yeah.
Chris, have you had any comments, questions?
We have nothing remaining at this point.
Okay, so it was closed out associated with that. Mr. Pollard?
No concerns, we're speeding it up for this lady.
Thank you very much. Would you like to give a presentation or anything?
No, I guess I guess I'm just here to get anything. I would address it, but if there's nothing...
Who are you with?
All around here.
You're with all of them?
Yeah.
Nothing, comments, or considerations?
We, yeah, we've addressed everything, so.
Board members, any questions, concerns, comments?
I have a question. On the foliage up in front when you come around, the same question I had for the other McDonald's Commercial Drive that they were going to consider, I don't think that they did, as it relates to coming out and making sure there's enough foliage so that when the headlights beam out onto the road, it doesn't go into the site, one on traffic. And so I just wanted to make sure that foliage is going to be high enough because I asked about that for Commercial Drive, it said we considered it, and they considered it, obviously voted it down, so making sure that the front foliage is high enough.
So the shrubs to block the headlight screening.
Okay.
Heather, when you say the front, which side are you talking about specifically?
Oh, I know you just...
Okay.
There's no cars parked directly towards Anita.
Yeah, it just wouldn't, it's just the foliage, just to be a little bit higher. Okay, cool, okay.
Just on the aerial map on the first page, the street name is wrong. Everywhere is Elton, the map is correct, but it's not, I don't believe it's Kellogg Road and Chapman.
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 Good for you.
I was trying to get Ori ahead, it just wasn't working.
Kellogg is good.
But everywhere is Elton, it's correct.
Any other board member have any questions, concerns?
She knows.
Anything else?
Let's make a motion to approve the final site plan review.
Right. Final, grant final, final approval for seeker?
Close seeker.
Close seeker. Okay, so Heather moved to close seeker. Bill, second. So, all those in favor of closing seeker?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're going to grant final approval. Motion grant final.
So move.
Final, second.
Right.
Bill, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, you're all set.
Thank you.
We got the topics in the map, so everything that we have. Okay. Third item on the agenda for tonight is Mr. Ray Trotta, Island Trotta Project for Joseph Creasy, 4752 and 4754 Commercial Drive in Hartford, the final site plan review for post retail project. Mr. Trotta, you going to give a quick presentation?
Yes, I will, thank you. And with me this evening, I also have John Mancuso from our speech, he's our legal counsel at here, just to kind of be a support. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's been a little bit of time since we've seen you in a formal setting last, and what I'd like to do is kind of go through a little bit of the overall project and then also an update of what I have distributed on the table, a couple of drawings that were in your application, and they were, they were basically, those specific items were in the, thank you, in the seeker process, we went through and addressed all the seeker comments, and those were inserted into everybody in the board. Then there were some further comments from the town engineer after the seeker, after we addressed everything to obviously do the final review, and we addressed all those comments, and those sheets that I passed out to everybody at the start of the meeting are actually those specific sheets that are just the changes from what you had last time, and I apologize.
I've got them.
Okay, they're right over there, sorry about that door. So those, those in particular are specifically the changes that the town engineer requested to be addressed into the drawings after we submitted the final submission.
Now, all those sheets there, are you going to give them on there also?
Yes, and I'll go through, I'll go through them specifically, and they specifically correlated this sheet as well. So basically where we're looking at, obviously this is on, the exact addresses are 4752 and 4754, 54 being larger of the two, and, and basically what it is, is the existing dry cleaner and retail building that's next door, coming off of Commercial Drive, this is the existing site with Mud Creek towards the bottom of the site, as you can see on the spread, which is technically southeast, I would say, on the site. There was a couple of discussion items of the easement itself that is between the adjacent property owner right over here, Mr. Hay, which I believe is here as well tonight, and we made sure that was delineated on here. It's an 18-foot easement, which is basically nine foot on either side of the property line as far as a future access easement, off, off to the north, to the northwest side of the property. What we are proposing to do, is that's just a site preparation plan? What are we proposing to do, and I apologize about the little gradation on our printer, but basically is to have two buildings knocking down the existing buildings and proposing two buildings, one being a medical and dental office, it's an urgent care and a dental office, and then the other being a coffee shop with a drive-through area. What we did from last time, just to be clear, there was a variance that was, we were looking at a different site plan, which I'm not going to go into detail on that one, but that different site plan actually included a croaching on the setback that was by, by this, this zone, and, and it was also, it was also a parking variance as well, as far as the amount of parking. That being said, there was some discussion with the board about, you know, because of the parking, it's actually, we're following the building uses, but what it did is it kicked it into a retail plaza, so that was the case that we were dealing with. In this case, we're under that square footage threshold to kick it into a retail plaza, so these are looked at as individual building on the parking. The reason why I'm going into detail on that is we are under the parking requirement, so we need that threshold, we're fine, we are not looking at any variances whatsoever because the second part of that equation is we are no longer, as you can see right here, this is that easement, we are outside that easement, and we are also outside of the setback area, which the easement, the setback, the setback was 10, the easement was 9. And that's why you see they're virtually at this scale, they almost look like they're on top of each other. That being said, there are no variances being seeked, it's more, more of a as of right being that we're following the local, all the local ordinances. If you look through the site, generally bioretention area towards the, it's the southeast portion of the site, there's obviously by the creek, we're not inhibiting any, any stormwater that would be on any wetland area or anything of that nature. We also have a bioretention in the northeast portion that is catching runoff, and we have worked with the town engineer, and I'll get into somewhat in detail, but I'll get, I could go through bullet by bullet, but basically we've addressed all the concerns of the percentages that are required to be an improvement, and also how the calculations were met. So we worked through with the town engineer on that, and I believe Chris did, did the letter, went through those bullet items, was that circulated to all the board members as well? So they, they've seen that as well. That being said, what I wanted to go through is a couple of key items, and then I'm going to get into the specifics of, of basically what, what we were addressing specifically to the town engineer. Some of the items that came up were, probably looks, this, this sheet right here.
Eighty.
I'm going to go to landscape plan and then come back. There was a comment that came up, it was from the adjacent property owner, and also just a clarification of what set of plans were up there, are, are we inhibiting that easement at all? And what I did is, I know it's a little bit hard to see, but this little red line right here, that little red line is actually the extent of how far the easement is to the, it would be the northeast side of the property line, and you can see the circle, these, these trees right here, that tree is actually, the trunk of the tree is in the center, and that tree trunk is about four feet, three to four feet off of that line. So it's clearly not in, in way of the easement. I think some of the other comments that came back from the adjacent order were, were actually a earlier version of the site that didn't have all the comments addressed that, that kind of came up in.
Their council referred to some, you had around that crab apple trees?
Correct.
Three, you had around that crab apple trees?
And it was an earlier version, that's what I was referring to, there's only one, and these other two are beyond the easement limits. The easement limits, as I showed you right here, only go to the back of the first, first property line, so, so basically the three trees, what we're done...
One isn't in it, and the other two are beyond the easement?
Correct, so that, the easement ends right here.
Okay.
And so these two are beyond it. This one would have been in the first original, but it is now pulled off to the side.
Okay.
So, so those, those three items are already been addressed, just with the plan itself, before that, those comments that became up. The next question is on the utility plan. Look over here, I got nails, I better. On the grading utility plan, I believe, this one should be, yep, C4, okay. So on C4, which is utility plan, one of the notes were, were basically that should refer to Anita County Department of Health, that was a mistake on our side, we apologize about that, we had the wrong health department on there, it was just a typo, we corrected that. There are also the correct water authority, we corrected that as well, so the notes were corrected. Item three was the Mohawk Valley Water Authority, which was another comment that was just referring to the wrong agency. So generally, these, these are very good comments, but they were more drafting and typos. The signage, I wanted to clarify on the signage that the approval we're seeking this evening is not for any signage at all. So, so basically the only thing we are showing, I believe on, we are, we are showing on the site plan like a location of the sign, but that's it. So any sign applications would be a separate application that will come in front of the board. And the reason for that is, is typically on the most of developments you do, the tenant is responsible for signage, so, so basically we do the building, the tenant does the signage, so that will be a separate application. The other thing is, there, there was a question on the traffic flow, and I know this came up during zoning as well, and we did thoroughly look at this with our traffic engineer. Rover, what exactly is going on here? What we did is generally the same that we showed last time in zoning, and how this flows is, as you come into the site, you basically have a one-way lane to circulate this building that could come in here and then circulate out this way. So you come in this way, circulate, then for the drive-through, you come against the building. Now, now the reason why we have this double with a raised median in between is basically allows a separation of one-way traffic only for the drive-through, and this little striped area is a bypass lane in case of emergency or say someone at the last minute decides they don't want to go to the drive-through, they could cut through this area. We had our traffic engineer look at it extensively, and based on the volumes that we would have and whatnot, this will not, I mean, it's a tight site, I'll, I'll be very frank with you, it is a tight site, but this is probably the best solution we could think of, rather than flipping it to the other side, or flipping the building to the other side to make the development viable, but also have the best course of circulation. So, so more or less what you can do is coming from here, you take this little bypass to go around this building, or if you, there is no way to get from here to here, that would be a very awkward traffic circulation right there. So what we did from last time is we, we really pronounced, I think the last one I showed was really more striking, and we really pronounced these medians, so it forces the traffic to flow the way we want it. So, so basically this median, you come in here, circulate, the other way is basically as you're coming around this way, you can go back to this building if you wanted to, or you could go, go around and still make this, this turn if you, if you really needed to. But again, these are very rare occurrences for someone to go in there, they're going to hit the first one, and the only reason you would have this is basically if someone was backing up right there, someone could go around them and still make this turn, and we made a nice generous radius. Coming around this way, obviously it's a very nice sloped radius to get in this side or come around this side, but we made sure that we were well above the tenant's needs for queuing. I don't have the list here, but I want to say it was at least eight cars, probably nine cars could be stacked up just in this area without even coming outside of traffic at all. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to keep any traffic that circulates to the drive-through to the outside portion of the site, and, and actually have safe travel around the entire Aspen Five Star building. You'll notice that there is some parking area in the front, some in the rear, but from what we showed before, we used to have quite a bit of parking down in this area. We increased the green space and the actually retention area from what was originally proposed. I think if, when we saw preliminarily, probably right about where my finger is, this was all parking coming down to the outside. So, so we significantly reduced the parking, and also they had to do with being no variances whatsoever on the parking right at this moment. So, so basically everything, everything is compliant. That, we could come back to if there's any questions on it, but there was also loading and unloading for the proposed coffee shop. All the loading would be after hours. The idea is, is obviously this is the front of the space, it would come into the side of the space and be loaded at the rear. There's also, this area right here would be after hours, could be used for loading the truck as well. So there's a pretty large extensive area right at this, this back, which is, which is basically for, for landscaped area and whatnot, but, but this, this area where, would be where the truck pulls on either side, and it would be after hours.
What is after hours? I don't, I don't make the trouble.
The, the, right now, we don't have a specific, specific tenant, so it would be, it's not a 24-hour drive-through or anything like that, we're talking 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, so it would be before, before those hours or after those hours, one of the other. So, so it would be, it would be off hours if you... The, I was going to say, anything with the federal wetlands, I don't know if, Chris, if the board wants me to go into detail on each specific item, but we have addressed, and we could go into detail about, addressed every, every swift comment that actually came up. Most of them are, you know, basically revising it accordingly, and there's a lot of judgment calls if you say yes or no, and if there's like 100% no impact, or there's no significant impact, so we, we address those. The one thing, and Chris, you could chime in, is I'm assuming that this, this is, in our discussions and in our, our calculations, we've met and exceeded the standards from the town, yeah?
Yeah, we've generally, on Mud Creek, been requesting 25% additional capture for post-runoff, and I believe they're in the 40% range. So they've done beyond, like we've kind of been asking out of these developers along that Mud Creek.
And that was part of this, this retraction, if you will, of the pavement as well, so that was to meet that standard. These are all swift comments.
No, we can't do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was nothing really swift.
Chris, has the, has the creek ever flooded to where you're talking?
No, you're pretty high in that, in this location.
Yep.
I'm more worried about affecting people downstream. That was really, during all this, it's about how do we minimize what's currently going into there, and they're going to do a small little part to alleviate something. You know, that's all we can do is ask at this point.
Yeah, because it's a...
We're doing what we have under control, basically.
Their site won't be affected, other people would, so.
And then one key item on, on obviously endangered species are the northern lawn-eared bat. We will not do any construction activities when, when it's applicable, that it could disturb the bat's environment at all, so, so the tree clearing would be, I believe, is before April 1st.
Yeah, you can do it after, you just have to have someone there watching for bats.
Right, so we would have a bat specialist if we have to.
Someone's funny, but we've had to do it many times.
Exactly, exactly. So, so our intent is, is basically to do some preliminary clearing to anything we need, as soon as we have approval, obviously we want, you know, we have a tight window, we only have about a month, so we want, want to do that, and then we either stop activities or, like Chris said, we would have a consultant that would come in that would specifically address those items. That being said, these, these specific items are sheet, I believe you have sheet C4, and you have sheet, the landscaping plan, so C, you should have C3, C4, I believe C5, and And one thing I just did want to go over is...
You have survey.
Yeah, C1 should, C1 is actually the, is actually the survey, so that, that one was, just to make sure that you have the easement called out correctly, and that was a request. So that, that's an existing permission plan, so that, that one was the one I just wanted to make sure you had, so you had any, those generally notes in calling out those easements. One thing I did want to call up as well is, you know, it's always a concern of lighting and any flooding, and you could see that there is no adjacent property that has any flooding going outside. There is a little bit right here into the right-of-way on the street, but quite frankly, the lights that are on the street are flooding our way. So it's, it's just, this is basically, we're specifically going on our site, but this, this particular light floods this way, but also the street lights are, which we obviously don't show, are actually flooding more onto the property than, that this light is flooding onto them. But all, all the lighting, as you can see, is contained purely, it's darkside compliant and is purely contained within the parameters of, of the property. That being said, what we're looking for tonight is, obviously we've had, one thing I did call out again, is we are not seeking, we're, we're actually going to be going back to the, back to the zoning board or to retract these ZVA approval for those two variances that we were looking for before, because they're no longer needed, and, and basically that, that will eliminate that one thing, and that was one of the reasons that C1 is on there because it says, it specifically says on there in the site plan that we no longer need the ZVA variances. And we are also basically looking for final approval and obviously a negative declaration in seeker this evening so we can move forward with the project.
There was a question raised by Mr. Hayes' counsel as it relates to efforts to curb to ensure that cars will not park within that easement area. Is there any curvy there?
Yes, actually I could go through there and I could explain that.
It's curvy.
So basically, that area...
C3 is probably the best one for it.
What was that?
C3, C3 is probably, we'll show it.
That's C3 a little bit more, but I was just going to show with that, the curvy and stuff. The, the, oh, you're C3, you're right there. If you're looking at it. So with C3, basically as you can see, this is the easement right here, this dotted line, if you can see, is beyond the curb line. So what I mean by that is our curb is not within that easement at all, so there is a physical concrete curb, so it would have, there would be, have to be a vehicle that jumps the curb to park into the easement. So I mean, that's about the only concession we could make, without putting something permanent there. Now, originally, we actually were showing trees that, that were in there to deter people, but we pulled the trees out at the request of the adjacent, or a comment from the adjacent property owner. So without putting physical landscaping in there, the only way you could do it is with a curb, and, and still maintain that easement, so, so basically we're complying with that mission.
Is there any other questions, sir? Heather, I don't know if you want Chris to address the other comments that were raised by Mr. Hayes' counsel?
I'd like to have Chris, I got a couple of questions on the cell phone. First, I'm sorry, Chris, were you happy with what Mr. Trotta came back for, for his responses and comments associated with the other agencies now?
Yes, for all the seeker comments, yes, the SWIP, they had a round of comments, we went back and forth with, and I think we came, they addressed everything. There were some compromises with a couple of things, just how we interpret things, how they interpret, so.
And how are you with the responses to the other agencies, the agency comments, those were all addressed also?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any specific concerns or anything that you'd like to add?
I do not anymore. I mean, the only one I think, and I didn't see it in the response that I have here, but Rick Sherman did get an answer out of the county.
Yes.
I don't think that was addressed in this, at least the bio right here, it still says it's, once the agents started taking...
We, we did obtain those inverts, and it's 16 footballs, and we sent it under, we sent it under, I think it came out after the letter.
It might have, but it's not, it's not in the one I think Florida has in front of us, so that's why I want to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for bringing that up, so.
And I actually spoke to Stephen Maine to that.
You did, okay.
And he said that...
And I think that was one of the last things that our staff, we, we came up with to. So I'm satisfied.
There was a question about the water main across the frontage.
Yeah, and, and that question, actually, Chris, do you want to address?
Go ahead.
I mean, I was going to say, the water main across the frontage is actually to the benefit of the adjacent, adjacent property, so you can tie into that at any time, and we're kind of at the mercy of the water authority. We, we didn't dictate where, where that utility is, that was coming from the water authority, so, so I don't believe there would be any, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, any negative detriment to the adjacent property. In fact, it gives them a future opportunity to connect to it if there is anything going on in this area.
So they have to dig up the pavement to do it?
Not, the, the water, the water main would extend beyond, and if there's an easement, so they would, they have rights, they have an easement underneath that utility, so they would have to dig up, depending on how they want to connect it, that's, that's really, that's really the key, and again, that's not us, that's really the water authority dictates how they want to connect it. So, and if they have to do it as long as, part of those easements is as long as they repair it in, in the fashion that it was, it was before, that's, that's part of the easement. It's a maintenance portion of the easement.
I have two questions. I noticed you used hydro cap for your valuation for the area itself. Have you guys verified that there are no, zero net rise in the base flood elevation for the Mud Creek area?
Well, that's not done through hydro cap, that's done through a HECS model.
It's done through a HECS model, that's what I was saying.
There's no HECS model required here.
There is no HECS, so they're completely out of the 100 year footprint.
Correct, yeah.
And that's addressed.
Yeah, and then the post-flood, or post-volume coming out of this site, there has to be none, and we've asked for 25% reduction on top of that, which DEC says zero, we say 25, they've actually gotten 40.
So you, you're not...
They're reducing it by 40% as to what it is now.
And zero conveyance to, to join properties via any pipe mechanism?
Correct, that is correct.
Under the, that would address. Joe, any other concerns?
No, I don't trust my concern.
Or do you have everything?
Yeah, Chris, earlier today, we presented a proposed Part II and Part III for the full EAF. Have you reviewed that as well?
I did.
You believe it's accurate in terms of the responses?
Yes.
And you also saw that obviously we would be declaring a negative declaration under seeker, and did you also see the attachment to Part III with all of the responses to each of the 18 questions?
Yes.
And you feel that these are accurate responses?
I do.
And you feel we're fine with the Part II and Part III as complete?
Yes, I thought it was very well put together.
You have all the links you need for the...
Yeah, no, I, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, I, yeah, absolutely.
All the numbers, any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a few questions. So, when an agency has concerns, do you respond directly back to the agency with your change plans? Is that typical?
Yes, yes, on both, yes and no, and what I mean by that, yes and. So, we've responded to the agency and a copy of the town and everything. So, so basically, there's been two responses, and somehow, the county, I don't know how they had whole drawings, but we, we've sent them repeatedly, and I finally emailed him, the one, the, the assistant directly, and, and basically, he got that, I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but he got, he got him the latest and greatest set. So, the comment that the county had was actually addressed a while ago, and, and they just didn't, somehow, it just got lost in the mix, so we made sure we told them.
I spoke with the reviewing engineer of the Water Authority today, and they never received any feedback after their initial response.
Everything was sent to them.
But they...
Yes, they haven't received anything. I should show them what I had. I, I do think that with the movement of the hydrant and the full frontage, he, he misunderstood where the service would come in, but I think that it answers it, but he never, he never received a response after his initial review, which was months ago.
I could check on that for you, I could definitely check on it for you. I know we addressed it, I, I could check on it.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it is addressed.
Yeah.
My, I have several questions. One, on which sheet do you show the signage for the circulation, internal circulation? Are there any signs, or strictly pavement markings?
Right now, it's strictly pavement markings. So, there would be directional signage that would be proposed typically when this comes in for a signage application, and when this one submits first. They, they don't usually use directional signage, as far as the Aspen Five Star, but this coffee shop most likely would, if everything else is striping at the moment.
Well, it, it's a very complex site, so on the northmost one-way between the buildings, what is the, which is the primary entrance to it? The one that skirts the three parking spots, and who are those parking spots?
Those parking spots are allocated, I'm sorry, to, basically, would be employees for Aspen Five Star, because, because the front doors are back here, this, this is back a house. So, so basically, they would, they would come around the front. So, those would just be employees, and it's for those, those spots. No one would park there to, to come to here. And, and on this side of the coffee shop, there is so much ample parking on the other side that it's really not necessary.
So, that, so there's two entrance, entries, plus the, the bailout lane down the prime entry, so...
Correct.
Two entries to the northernmost one-way to the, between the buildings.
This is your primary, your primaries right here.
So, it will skirt the cars for the primary entry?
Correct, and it does, it's not in conflict with the cars, it's just if someone's backing out. So, so what I was saying, if, if someone was backing out and occupying this lane, you could go around. So, it is the primary.
And there's, there is screening where the dumpsters are, correct? So, it's, it's somewhat obstructed view if you're backing out and someone's coming into the site?
Um, it, not really, because if you look at the plan right there, the doors are almost at the front of the car.
Okay.
So, so, so basically, in that one, I could see how you could, I see that, because it's a darker color.
Okay, so, the two entry lanes there, my other cons, well, I have several concerns about the circulation. I think that some of them were addressed by removing the parking, because there may be stacking that comes beyond the stacking lanes.
Yeah, and this, this...
But, but yeah, the other concern, so now, the primary, to go through the drive-through, they're going to come down the diagonal entrance and then make the third right-hand turn, correct?
Correct.
To get into the coffee lane.
That is correct, and there'll be signage, for that, you're absolutely right, there would be signage that would come with their sign package to tell them not to do it.
Right, and it's not unusual in the coffee shops around here to have more than eight cars stacked. So, if someone were to go, say, through the right lane, around the parking to get in line, there's going to be a conflict to try to get into that lane, and...
Well, well, actually, to your point, which is a good one, is that, that first of all, you could have right around here stacking, which is tons. On this one in particular, as you're, you're observing, is that, that basically, if you block this, this one's open. So, the, there, if the occasion that this car was pulling out, this is overstacked, that's the only circumstance you would have with that, because, because this would be coming...
No, no, I'm not, I'm not concerned with blocking the entrance to the northmost.
Okay.
I'm concerned with the people that really need their coffee in the morning. So, if they're stacking around, I'm not joking, right? I've seen it, you're pretty amazing. So, they're stacking around, okay, and then someone's coming to this point here. So, we have, just say, a couple cars stacked there, and someone wants to get in, because that is the primary entrance for the coffee lane.
Right, right.
And so, my concern is, how is that going to be signed to eliminate the conflicts there?
The, there's two ways to sign, and, and I understand exactly what you're saying. So, by time you have, and that's where I was getting at, if there's eight to nine cars at this point,
Yeah.
and then you have 10, 11, 12, 12 cars, then it gets to this point. There, there is, the, the, in that circumstance, and there's people coming around this way as well, is this car that sees someone stacked would go around, come back around and get in this lane. And, and I, I don't know any other way to, in signage, to tell them to do that, because it, 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 that would be a situation where you have 12 cars this way, and, and multiple cars this way. Is it possible? Yes, of course it's possible, but it's not as likely to get 30 cars, you know what I'm saying? So, 10 maybe, 10 maybe.
I do think that that could be eliminated if the traffic control is proper, let's say, two stop signs, and then they would take...
Yes, exactly.
My one concern was not addressed. I think the rest of it's okay, but from last meeting, the parallel stop signs in each of those lanes going into two-way parking traffic, so to speak, is a non-traditional intersection type. And I would feel much better if one of those lanes were controlled before it hit the parking lane. So, for instance, I've seen this too, after the drive-through, there's either a stop or yield, and they merge back into one lane before it goes into where it meets the parking area, where they have to, because there's going to be many situations where they both want to make a left-hand turn, and their stop sign, it's probably more rare for someone to get coffee and then go to the dentist to, to make that left, though.
I, I completely understa, and we actually had an earlier concept that converged these two lanes to one. Our traffic engineer looked at it and said, they had an issue with it, because that would create even more stacking. So, now, now you just created a bottleneck. And, and right, right here, you have someone, someone could, say, someone was stopped here for whatever reason, this person could still get out. If you, it's, it's almost creating a bypass lane, but they're in their own, own lanes. If we converged it, then you're bottlenecking two buildings into one, and at that point, you might as well just have a two-way with, you know, and get rid of the one-way totally.
Yeah, that's why I think you're, you know, trying to put a larger foot in the smaller shoe on this site, because I, I really cannot approve, or I, I would not vote to approve this situation, because it's such, I, I believe, unsafe, it started here, it's low-speed issues, but it's just such a non-traditional awkward movement that unless that they were both controlled, and I do understand the stacking, but it...
Well, one of the things to, to answer your question, which can be done, is, is since we have the crosswalk right here anyway, we could obviously add stop sign right at the crosswalk, so that stops them and goes on. But, as far as to your fact of, I mean, literally, we're about, I would say, maybe a fifth from other applicants that have come in as far as building area, so we're trying to do everything we can.
No, I do understand, I do understand, I do understand.
So, we're kind of, I don't disagree, it's a little bit of a conundrum, because, first of all, we have a trying to do it lot, second of all, we have a creek that's on the outside, and that, and there's, there's a lot of obstacles that are there, but, but that, I, I'm not sure, I did, to, to your point, the comments you specifically had, I brought it back to our traffic engineer, and he went through like two, three different models, and he's like, this is probably the safest way. You definitely have people stopping for the pedestrians, and then you have the, then you have the double stop already. Now, could we add additional signage at that stop? Sure, sure, that's not a problem. But, I, I guess it's the lesser of evils, if you will, to, to do it in that, that fashion.
The, the other question, and I apologize, I didn't go through all the details on this small sheet, they're hard to read. Are, are those monobowl curves between the two lanes?
Yes.
That four-way?
Yes, yep, yep, there.
Yes, that's all I have.
Real quick question, Billy, I, your traffic engineer ran multiple models for the traffic control pad as a cap, and he determined and settled that it's a safe, safe decision.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, and in, and in fact, I believe, I, there was an additional letter distributed to the board that he went through, he went through all the, all the comments that came up, and, and reviewed it, and reviewed the models, so, so he, I know it's kind of more of a general letter, but, but he did do that, and I did specifically ask him to help it, so.
Appreciate you looking at it.
I mean, it's not a perfect site, but, I mean, I think that is the best situation, like, kind of, over there. I think people are just going to probably say, it's too difficult to get there, and they're, you know, they're just going to work this out.
Well, once you, once you go beyond like 20 people, you're right. I mean, you know, at some point, right up here, they're going to see, they'll just go around and make a couple of...
You'll see if you're in Russia, we'll go there probably, because of it.
You, Chris, you saw the letter that Mr. Hayes' counsel submitted?
The recent one?
Yes, with the 10, or concerns. And I, I believe you prepared a response?
We did, I did, I just sent an email to Doris, and I didn't have any exceptions.
You feel these have all been dealt with, or are not issues?
Yeah, and I think a lot of them, we talked through with the engineer, and they were, as a result of looking at an old site plan, as you pointed out, some of them weren't even really comments anymore.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I'm a little disappointed, I know that there's a lot going on here, awful lot. And first of all, I'm very excited to hear that we were able to make a change, and so, with the massive flooding issues that are over there in Mud Creek, that swarm water into that creek has reduced. I think that's awesome, we don't hear about that very often at this board, and I think that's awesome, that, that, you know, that owner was willing to, or whoever's developing was willing to do that. I'm disappointed, though, because I had to get on the phone today, when I started getting emails Thursday and Friday and today, with questions that seemed open, and there were no concrete responses. And it was lunch hour, so I didn't call Joe, I had actually spoken, I came up and saw Liz as it relates to the water board questions, I got on the phone with the county to get answers to questions, so that I could make sure I had all the information, that I can inform and educate a decision in half of the town.
True.
And then I come here tonight, and we've got, as I'm sitting here, and I do have a question about one of the answers, I haven't even gotten to all of this yet. So, historically, when something comes before us, and I know spring is, spring is encroaching, and people want to get into the ground, but historically, before something gets put on the agenda, all those things, all those necessary elements for a complete package, sometimes there's some elements that, you know, that are small. But we have a complete package to make a solid decision based on all the information. So, I just want to stress, I'm, I'm a little disappointed, and I don't know if that's, if that's staff, I don't know if that's the developer, I don't know if that's the engineer, I don't know if the agency's not getting back to us timely, but there's, I mean, I, I guess, I'm just going to leave it at that, that I hope in the future, you know, and I, I've got one particular question, but I haven't even made it through all of this yet.
Well, when we met at the staff meeting, Chris had a number of items that he felt still needed to be addressed. When was that?
Yeah, they were more related to SWIP stops, yeah.
Yeah, and that was about a week ago, or a week and a half ago, and I believe subsequent to that, those were resolved. So, at that point in time, we started to complete the Phase Two, the Part Two and Part Three, so that we could finalize, it's consistent with everything that's been presented, it's just formalizing it with a written completed document. And the resolution issues the negative deck, and the other resolution...
But you understand my concern, my question, or my comment.
Yeah, and, and my response is that we didn't know until sometime late last week that this was a go. I, I thought it wasn't going to be a go, and then, I think, some of the issues were resolved, and that's how...
Well, the agenda came out before the end of last week, and they were on there, so I think...
Well, we had hoped it would be on.
Right, so I think, and I don't want to delaborate the point, I guess, it just, you know, it's my vote, it's not you voting, it's not Chris voting, it's me voting.
I understand that.
And that's, and I take that seriously. And so, I guess I'm just asking in the future, that you take, that, that it's taken into consideration that we have a complete package, so that you can make an educated decision. Based on that, I'm only on page five of 10, but I have one question, because I can't listen and read at the same time. You talked about the bats, were on here bats?
Mm-hmm.
And number G, under seven G, proposed, actually substantially interfered with nesting breeding. Was there any nesting breeding, breeding origing?
No, no, there was not that we could find, but all of New York State has the potential. So, so basically, what we're going is by, by the guidelines of...
It's just because you brought it up, that's why subsequently I asked the question.
Correct, correct, and, and, and I apologize about that. The other thing to respond, the town has been great with, with getting back to us. I can tell you the other jurisdictions, we've had these responses out for quite a while, and on our side, we've responded within hours. So, as, from the African side, I feel your pain, because to stay on the agenda, we've literally jumped through hoops and tap danced quite a bit, so, you know, to get the things done in the, in the fashion we were given. None of this, but the town was, was extremely responsive to us, it was the outside jurisdictions.
And the bats, we had that same situation when we did the Ray Hill Trail, and they had to be mitigated at a certain specific period of time. What is it, April, you can't touch it, it's the end of October?
On the October, correct.
Yeah.
Wait, you understand, I'm just asking a question, because I'm on page five of 10.
Understood, understood.
I have a concern with the two-way traffic to the west side of the coffee shop.
Okay, this side?
Yeah. I think the whole thing should be one-way from the dual lane.
You mean from, the problem is, is there's no connection point here, so there's no way to get out. So, you have to be able to get out this way. The two-way traffic, and, and keep in mind, I know it's hard to see on the plan, but these are 24-foot lanes, there are two 12-foot lanes, which are pretty wide. So, so basically, originally, in one of the plans, it was a thought to get, get out this way, but the DOT comments came back that the queuing had to be to this point right here, was the middle distance. So, there was no way to basically circulate out. Now, there was a, a plan that actually came out this way, and we, we got some comments back early on from staff and whatnot, that they thought that would be dangerous coming out of there, so we eliminated that. So, to answer your question, we did everything we could, and that was the only solution.
Well, it just seems you get people going back across the front from that parking, from that other parking area, where everybody's coming out of the coffee shop lane and turning left. It just looks like trouble.
Well, keep in mind, too, that slow traffic, medium speed, moderate speed. So, so basically, the moderate speed has no parking, no conflicts at all. So, so basically, this whole strip right here, there's, that's where your accidents would major it. I mean, is it possible for a fender bender? Yes, but no, no, you know, someone getting hurt or whatnot, and this, from a safety standpoint, this is where you're the most concerned, and that's where the DOT is concerned. That's why we addressed it, and that's it. It, it is, I, nothing's perfect, I, I, granted, I, I agree with you on that, but it was the best solution under circumstances.
Can you use the floodplain question card?
And you said there was no, there were out there, because the outside, the 100-year floodplain?
It says here that they're in the, you're talking to a building, it says here that the site isn't the 100-year floodplain.
The, the site is within the floodplain, there will be no buildings?
Correct.
Or improvements within?
That's attorney main, too, so.
There's no filling.
There's no filling within the floodplain. So, we're, we're leaving that undisturbed, that the construction will occur, I believe that's northwesterly of the floodplain area, but the site itself, if you map out the entire boundary line, does abortion on the fall within the floodplain, so that's why the Part One would be checked yes, to acknowledge that.
Okay, is that shown on any of the maps, or is...
Any.
Uh, the, I believe, the limits of it, making a survey.
And what, the hydro cap, instead of the HECRA?
It's right here, the elevation's right on, it's right on there.
Thank you.
That was what I had, Chris first.
Look.
It was not a...
There's no filling in the floodplain.
The site is within the flood, obviously, we have one creek in there, so it's got, yeah, it's got to be.
Again, I'm going to go back to, to the original question, and you said this, so everybody's clear. There will be no rise in the base flood elevation as, as provided for the following of the site.
That is correct.
Yes, there, there has not been a HECRA model. HECRA model is done on anything in a floodway. The floodway is the creek. The floodplain is different than the... The floodplain is different than the floodway. Floodplain can't fill without pattern effects. There is no fill structures in that floodplain, but the floodway would be a HECRA model situation. Do you remember what was the site farther up?
Down the street.
Down the street. Where they were, remember that bypass we built before it goes under Commercial Drive? They were right next to the floodplain and they wanted to fill in the floodplain. That's when we had a HECRA conversation because they were actually taking away from the flow of water.
You just want to make sure we're not contributing downstream flooding or impacts associated with neighbors on the backside of the creek.
Yeah, I got you.
Any questions, anybody else? You good, Herb?
Yep.
Joey, you're good?
Mm-hmm.
Chris, you're good?
I am.
How's her?
Hi. I mean, I'm not saying anything, you know? I mean, I'm just sitting here trying to read this and it says the planning board has reviewed this form, you know, and I haven't moved back through the paragraphs yet. So I just once again stress how disappointed I am that here on the road has something that I haven't enough time to read. But, I mean, he has met what appears to be the criteria of a site plan of the rating secret. I mean, that appears to be it, but as long as you take into consideration my concern in the future, I would appreciate it.
And Chris, you've reviewed all the responses again? And you feel that this is accurate?
Okay, can I get a motion to close secret?
So?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I get an approval to, or a motion to grant final approval for a site review?
Well, what we've done is we've completed parts two and part three on the full EAF and I would think that you'd want to have a motion to approve and authorize Ellis to sign on behalf of the planning board.
Okay. What Herb said?
So the negative debt, huh?
The second res, yes, and that's going to issue the negative debt.
For no adverse environmental impacts.
Correct. Well, you see it says no significant.
No significant impacts.
The box that's checked on the signature page states this project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment and therefore an environmental impact statement need not be prepared.
Can I get a motion for that?
So move. And then the next resolution is going to issue the negative debt.
Okay, so the other was two, okay.
The third one, we want to issue a negative debt separately from that?
There's a separate resolution saying that the planning board has reviewed and approved the project as an unlisted action. You've reviewed the EAF, you're accepting and approving and adopting part two, and you are indicating that Ellis is authorized to execute it and that the requirements of secret have been satisfied and it's a negative debt.
And it's a third and separate motion?
Yes.
Can we get a?
A motion, we're having a.
There's a motion.
We're on the first motion, the second one.
The first motion has to be approved.
The first motion, do we approve?
We closed the first.
Yes.
We did vote, but as I said, we want to get a vote.
And the second.
No vote, yes.
And that's for Ellis to sign, say there's no environmental, can we get a motion after that?
We have a motion.
There's a motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And then the third one is for final site plan approval.
Can I do?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
I know this on page seven. There used to be a pest control business in one of the vacant buildings. And do you anticipate there is any contaminated materials on site or do you do any drillings around, do they round?
We did not do drillings, but we will do all that prior to construction. So, and we have Joe Perici, the current owner, and I don't know Joe or John Dwyer, there's nothing that you know of at this time, but.
Not that I am aware of, no. Was there a pesticide company there?
Who?
Do you have a name of the company that may have been there?
L.A. Moore.
Pesticide?
L.A. Moore.
The answer is the phase one was done, but it didn't warrant a phase two. But what we do, when we do have soil testing, if there's any contaminated soils, we will deal with that on site, so.
But you didn't state.
No, no. But if something does come up, we'll handle it.
And you did a face watch?
Yes.
So we're up to final?
Yep. Motion to grant final approval.
Can we get a motion to grant final approval for the site?
I'll make the motion.
I can make the motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? I'll hear if you're not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a couple comments.
Don't forget my comment. One of these. I put you two.
I am. Actually, you know.
Everybody get to breathing. We've got one more item left on the agenda. We can all flex ourselves a little bit here. We're looking at a motion to add 8960 Tibbers Grove Park Church's passengers permit, site claim review for 24.852 kW solar array split property.
Yes, sir. So we're proposing to build a 24.852 kW solar array ground level in the back of, towards the back of Mr. Syed's property. It'll be split into two sub-rays to meet the setback requirements of 75 feet on the east and west sides of his property and then on the north and south side where 100s feet away from property lines. We need more to acquire this. We, I believe are here primarily for formality because it's part of the special use permit. In terms of the legislation, the 10 kW limitation has been increased to 25 kW and we are just on the left threshold. Or?
Yeah, it's based upon our new legislation, they are within what's authorized. I believe it will require a public hearing.
Yes. And I apologize for not having eight copies, but this is typically not the procedure for applying for a permit or getting approvals for a solar array. But in an attempt to help move the process along, Mr. Syed and I have agreed to add a visual barrier for the array on the north side of it so it'll protect the array from not only his site, but neighbor's sites as well. The longer the two sub-rays is going to be 62 feet and we're going to plant 28 Emerald Green Everites at three feet apart, which will encroach 86 feet approximately, 88 feet. So we'll have additional, perhaps 10 to 12 feet of foliage protruding from either end of the array as well.
How tall is it going to be when you plant it?
It'll be one to two feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be a one to two feet Everite with, it's relatively heavy foliage with a mature height of 14 to 16 feet.
Great. So.
He said they're here more for formality. It is a requirement of our code for any freestanding solar array to go for a special use permit.
Any comments on the board? I guess we're looking at a motion then for, move this to public hearing.
Schedule public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion.
On March 12th, maybe?
March 12th?
Does that give you enough time with the notice and everything?
Mm-hmm. Does this work together?
You prepared for March 12th? Will you be prepared?
You will be.
Okay. All those in favor to schedule a public hearing for March 12th for solar array?
Aye.
I think Ellis wants to.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you very much.
We're done, folks?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Julie, this could be less than 12 hours worth of, of being locked. 12 hours.
I second.
Let's second it.
Sorry, Brian.
No, but I thought I know what he was doing.